Right. Exciting and impressive. Again, apologies for being in our room, but perhaps not. Let's hope that we get through this session. My name is Gina Ramsha. I'm at the University of Toronto. I'll try to speak up because I only have to do the introduction today. I'm very happy to host this special session, which is actually organized by the program committees collaboratively and local organizing meetings. And we have a number of guests and we have a, we have a structure in the session that perhaps is typical without presentation, hopefully with engagement from your side. So the answers to this poll, to these questions in the poll, I hope we can return to them at the end of the session. But we have also other ways of asking, inviting you to participate. And we all know, we're very familiar and probably very involved and engaged in discussions about new generation of artificial intelligence. And the questions are extreme or more moderate. The answers are equally extreme or moderate, but it is the type of questions that we see in various conversations posing, asking whether AI is the future or a trap, whether it's the end of education as we know it or a new world in the making, whether it provides new opportunities for learning or students. It becomes a toolbox for cheating on itself, as is in oral where I come from, the discussions of creating at the moment. Whether it provides new tools for research or it generates the failure of leaving our job. So what we're trying to do today is actually to, it's to pose an invitation for a local discussion. And we hope that it's just the start of a long tail discussion in which we can capitalize on our expertise, experience and ideas for the future within our field. And this stems from the recognition of the need for discussion and research centered on the consequences of the right of generative AI for learning, design for learning and collaboration, but also raising questions about way AI customers or learners more need to attention. For the aim is to create an arena for the generative discussion for I S F level and to actually start a conversation that we hope it can continue. And logistically, we are considering moving this conversation after today on the, on the floor, the session floor of the I S F. So we will, we will follow up on that. But basically, we will start or I will start by inviting you to help your neighbor before we invite our experts, panelists to present their initiative statements and actually generate some. So you are actually one of the panelists or collective panelists in this discussion. So I, I did my best to create an arena for you to pose your, present your position. So what I would like to invite you to do is turn your neighbor, maybe in groups of three, so we don't have that many entries in the, in the paddlet board. And that for who three, that takes five minutes, I think we can, if they got time. And try to think of a position statement that kind of writes this question. You could formulate your answer, you could formulate a coherent answer to go and integrate it. I will, let's just kind of, I hope it works. So we will do this and while you're doing this, I'll prepare for introducing our panelists. Thank you. Okay, we brought this conversation. You can keep adding material or anything to the pattern. I will try to get some time together with Liz while, while the discussion is ongoing and I'll try to bring your voice back in, but of course you can wait for yourself your own idea. So what happens now is that we will, we'll bring, bring the panel to the front. I will introduce the panelists and our moderator and moderator of the discussion today. But for those who are not in the session, perhaps are in VUVA or are online on Zoom, the VUVA chat is enabled. So please use that as a way to communicate those questions and participate in the discussion. And that's valuable for your reading. So I logged into my computer again and tried to introduce our esteemed panelists. I'm very thankful for, for their participation, for the necessity of participating in the session. So Professor Brian Mick is the Honorable David Nelson Professional Chair and Associate Info Researcher at Lynch School of Education and Human Development, Boston College. The Professor of Information Science and Education. His research interests include the design of computer-based learning environments, human computer interaction, design sciences, office school learning and computer science education. With a background in computer science and engineering from Northwestern, Brian currently directs Boston College in Learning Engineering, a new program on applying the principles and methods that guide student learnings to design engagement and effective learning experience. Thank you, Brian, and I will invite him to come to the front when still possible.
Yeah.
Dr. Sahana Mertesin is a professor at the Indian Institute of Technology Bombay, India. She is a physics professor with degrees from Indian Institute of Technology in Bombay and from Rutgers University. She's currently leading interdisciplinary programming education technology in Bombay. Her major is areas of research on technology enhanced learning. For example, developing students' critical thinking and input practices in STEM domains through interactive technology enhanced learning environment and the designing models and life skills professional development workshops for effective integration of technology and strategy. I don't see them behind them, but they're here. So what happens now is that you can grab their chairs. So we're sitting in the front the whole time. So actually, you said. Margarita Romero is the professor at University of Quebec in France and an associate professor at University of Canada. Margarita has degrees in psychology from the University of Barcelona in Spain. She continued her career in Canada and France where she set up a research unit in learning sciences, laboratory, innovation, and many other disciplines. Her research focus is on studies from transversal competences, particularly in relation to confrontational thinking and creative problem solving. She currently coordinates a working group on educational challenges of artificial intelligence in education and co-direct international master programs, Smart Ed. Special professor and head of learning sciences and assessment academic research at the National Institute of Education in Singapore. Her research interests include computers for deep learning, learning analytics, AI for education and mobile learning. Many of his current school-based research projects address challenges of transforming and enhancing teaching and learning and applying her research outcomes to impact school practices. We're sitting there. Your. Marcelo Worthy is an assistant professor of learning sciences and computer science at Northwestern School of Education and Social Policy and the McCormick School of Engineering. He directs the technological innovation for intensive learning and teaching lab, which develops innovative and technological solutions for supporting learning among diverse populations and learners in underserved communities. In this work, among others, he uses multimodal signal processing artificial intelligence to study how students' learning is demonstrated across different modalities and time. And finally, Caroline Rose is a professor in human interactions, at the Institute of Language Technology. Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. But the professor in human computer interaction and the Institute of Language Technology at Carnegie Mellon. I hope that's clear. Among her areas of interest are applied machine learning, artificial intelligence, learning sciences and technologies and social computing. She directs interdisciplinary research, interdisciplinary research lab in India, where she, I pronounce that computer wrongly in a very lengthy way, where she develops and leads research by using approaches from computational discourse analysis and text mining, conversational agents and computer-supported collective learning. Her research contributes specifically to advancing the areas of automated analysis of collective learning processes and dynamic support for collective learning, where intelligent conversational agents are used to support collective learning in a complex sense and way. Thank you for joining us, Caroline. Caroline is the moderator of the panel discussion. So double thank you. Very active.
Okay, so everyone gets like three minutes to sort of say a few things. So wow, that didn't work. Is it not in display? Just by contextualizing all of this, because people, it sounds from the media like there was this huge something that happened recently in artificial intelligence and everything is different now. But I would say G P T four is a large language model. What is a language model? Well, you know, even P C A run over text would be a language model. It finds correlated elements from text and could be used to model themes that happen in language. A lot of us have used latent semantic analysis in the old days. People said L F A was so smart that it could pass to G M A D or other intelligence tests. And lots of the kinds of crazy claims people are making were made in the past about L F A. Then like Driesleigh allocation and other probabilistic graphical models came around and then people said, whoa, that's way better. And now we're done and we're not really. And then after that, of course, you know, deep learning was supposed to be this new thing, but it was really just the same neural nets that I learned as an undergrad in the eighties. But bigger. So I want to say, maybe I sound jaded, but the truth is that the technology itself isn't really that different. In fact, quite some time ago, you may have heard of transformer models like Birds and Elmo. Yeah, they were named after Sesame Street characters for whatever reason. They've been for some time and there's nothing different in the underlying architecture really of these large language models than that. But they're just a lot bigger. And because they're a lot bigger and trained on a lot more data, they have access to a lot more sophisticated patterns, but they're really just really, you could say, very fancy. Okay, I'm oversimplifying, but you know. Okay. So in my area of language technologies, let's say, when people are making these claims about generalizable artificial intelligence. And even if you just think about language, I'd like to say, there's a question, could there even ever be a generalized intelligence about language? These large language models, they make an assumption about where meaning lives. And I think many people in this group are, you're saying I already ran out of time? Language lives in the data, but we have known for a long time that that's not really true, that humans make meaning together. Um, and there are all these sources of how it is that we base that meaning-making on that are not in the text itself. And therefore, a language model could never have this knowledge and therefore we could never really have generalized. So now I'm just going to skip all this because there's no time, but please. We have a whole series of events for, we're doing kind of like this, getting people together to talk about these issues. Um, there are tutorials and they're free and they're online and anyone is welcome to sign up. We also had a panel on education and the future of work with many people whose names you'll recognize where we were getting, you know, questions and talking about these things. It was recorded too, if you're interested, we have half a bunch too with tax prizes. Okay, I'll just sit down now, but I just wanted to highlight those things. And now we'll have Wendy Chen.
Thank you, Caroline. I'm a very good afternoon to all of you. So I have a three minutes to share what my research was doing. Just to share with you before I share about our own research, let's just tell us what is happening in Singapore. So Singapore's government position is very clear, yes, embracing generative AI for teacher and the learning. So this is in the early February, the Minister of Education made a public speech embracing generative AI in schools. And also our university's stance is also very clear. So we are trying to equip students with the knowledge and skills to use this kind of a generative AI. But we want to have an ethical and critical way of using it and the trend of awards from the back of the. Okay, so actually I don't have time to go through the list. I'm from N I E National Institute of Education, the only teacher education institution in Singapore. Actually, we have a lot of, run a lot of a generative AI because it causes for our school teachers and also for school students. We are working with government trying to co-create some kind of a lesson package in, that comes up with AI literacy. So yeah, some of the programs we're promoting to our school teachers and by the way, all the school teachers from government schools are trying to buy our institution. Okay, so what kind of learning science school, by the way, I'm not talking about the general learning sciences community. I'm just sharing with you, what is a group of Singapore learning scientists and what are we doing? Well, in terms of AI literacy, because of the emergence of this kind of a generative AI and also technology developed through us, so in terms of learning about AI literacy, now we are in the process of reframing or redefining digital literacy. So what do we mean by digital literacy? It's about knowledge, skills, the attitudes, disposition towards AI. And because this kind of a generative AI, which is very powerful and maybe more powerful than the traditional AI. So it's not just about how AI works, but the disposition, how to work together with AI. And under the agenda of the research is a human machine collaboration. So this is very relevant for C S E, our company in Singapore. So we are trying to look at not just a human and a human, you know, mediated by technology. Now is from human and a machine, how are we going to pass a good passion? How to have a good cause, a kind of question to interact with AI? And the one, those are generated, AI generates the information, are they reliable? How do we know those information is good? And how do we produce a more, you know, relevant question to further? So this kind of things that we believe in the future, no more writing or creating from scratch. Okay, so I think why do we, all the learning scientists, we're quite concerned with this kind of generative AI. Of course, you can do a lot of so-called lower cognitive level work, like a summarize, reiterate. They can also do some very interesting creative work to that extent. But the learner's agency, we cannot be undermined. So we still want to promote infection, criticism and the building upon. So twenty first century skills is always something learning scientists is looking into. Now in the era of generative AI, this has become more and more important. So we want to highlight more twenty first century competency. And also some of my colleagues are developing APIs, trying to embed those generative AI, trying to get more pervasive, but personalize the learning for our school students. So in terms of learning scientists, because we are design-based researchers in Singapore, so we feel we need to, us in this community, we need to maybe lead in coming out some kind of design principles. So what we mean by design, meaningful learning process supported like this kind of a generative AI. What are the good practices? What are the things that we want to promote? What are the things that we want to avoid? I think at this stage, a lot of things are still in the, you know, infancy stage. A lot of things is emerging and developing. Perhaps the learning scientists can do as, yeah, trying to make things clearer, to lead. So challenges, so I just, I maybe ran out of time. So first, we feel like when we are doing this kind of project in schools and we also get a group of school principals come to N R E to take our courses. We always feel actually that public understanding of generative AI is very broad, but not deep. People would have basic understanding, but they may not have a deep understanding of it. And also one, one thing we are a bit concerned is appetite and inclusiveness. Even though people are saying generative AI can accessible to everybody, but actually we also found that that could bring more equity and inclusiveness issues. And another thing we are quite concerned is this generative AI, what are we getting and what are we losing? Yeah. Yeah, I know who you are.
We have the only two people with some slides, so if you want to go with the others.
No, go right ahead. But I'm, I'm gonna.
Okay, so I'd love to acknowledge the discussions I've had in the past one year with, you know, with people in with several panels and committees and multiple initiatives that have been happening in India. This is between academia, government, NGO companies and so on. So just a few examples here. The first one, the one you said was a panel discussion organized by the Tech Society of India's perspective series in America. And they're learning scientists, the one at the top and the one on the left, she's actually doing a conference, I think, in Kotea. There were technology developers, the ones who have their technology researcher. The on the right, the student. So we put together this panel to discuss about Chat G P T and what each of them, how they're using it and then I B S. The other one is because of an educational country where there were government policymakers, A G Os, implementers and educators who worked together. A lot of the discussion was about generative AI. Again, the date is a bit important, it's April twelve this year. So the conversation has started. The third one was, I was in a committee of editors and authors with UNESCO had put together to come up with the State of Education Report India, which they've been doing every year since, I think, two thousand twenty-one. So every year is a different theme area. And since two thousand twenty, this was a third edition. And twenty twenty-two, the theme idea was AI. A lot of the discussion and coming up at the table of contents focused on teaching of AI, teaching AI to learners as well as teaching with AI. This was, this came out in September twenty twenty-two, before November of the launch. And also there isn't anything about Chat G P T in it, but there was a lot of ideas still. The other person I want to acknowledge is one of our PhD alums who's running a company and he thinks doing a lot of training programs on how to teach online and how to leverage on Chat G P T for teachers. So I just had this conversation, I've been having these conversations. And the final person or entity or whatever you may want to call is, I wouldn't like to, I think it's a lot. I had an idea of what I wanted to say, but I queried these two questions to. What are the occurrences and challenges of generating AI? Because that was one of the prompts that Trina had given us. It did come up, gave me some meaningful things on the topic. So while this isn't the full position statement, I do want to draw on a few themes here. One is that we need all these different conversations between all these different kinds of people for the new generation of AI in ed to make an impact. I myself am a learning scientist and use design-based approaches to use technology and design technology enhanced learning environments. I also work with teachers, so that's where I come from. Secondly, as someone mentioned towards the end of the keynote, that there is an opportunity here for learning science and research and research. And there's also a responsibility, we have to say something. It is out there, it's there everywhere. So that was another reason I wanted to show you that worldwide, including in all countries over the world, this is happening. And as Caroline stands, I. Uh, and as Carolyn stands, I. That the last thing I, that went over one more, I did, is we really need to teach my post-grad PhD students who come to me with chat G P T generated, mutually written reports. On how it's good for listeners, that's another, but how they can build up. Both were there, and I, I had to do a little bit of both, but it was really a great starting point. So if I get a chance to show my slides again later. It's fun with comments and what we teach.
That's great, Peter. Peter, and yeah, and feel free to ask us the questions, please. There's supposed to be a slide, but how does everyone zoom on it? What happened to that slide? Okay, all right, so next we will have Brian Smith, Brian.
Great, I'm gonna try and be, you know what, I'm not gonna try and be like. Um. So I, I've been working in AI. I think Carolyn, right, that's about right, um undergrad, I remember undergrad with uh taking into patterns. And neural networks and things like that, so in some extent. You know, there, there's nothing new that. I haven't seen in a sense, I mean, it is kind of pretty incredible of chat G P T and these kinds of language models can do. Um, in the late, no, I'm sorry, in the early nineties, I, I did a master's thesis and I, I wrote this program. So here, or, or rather than here, it's uh what I tried to do is try to generate music. To accompany what would representation, representation, that was what we used to talk about. When we talk about AI, now I'll preface it, that's a joke, it's all good music. Um, and so I tried to generate films, so. Even more so, I mean, I've been part of sort of trying to do generative AI for a long time. I tell my daughter, I'm O G, original generator. Now, I said that after I did that program, I went to this place called the Institute for the Learning Sciences, it was just open to source. And I was working with somebody by the name of Roger Shen, you may have heard that name. Where there are, you guys controversial sometimes, right, well, I learned an incredible amount from him. About AI and then the learning sciences after that. One of the things I remember having a conversation with Roger about that, I said, look, I'm building this, this program, it's gonna teach big kids something. And I gotta find the word, please put AI in, right? And he said, what do you mean you gotta find it? But I guess, I said, man, I'm an AI guy, I gotta find AI with AI in a system. And he said, why would you do that? Why would you do that? You only use AI when you need the AI to solve a problem. And if AI is not doing any good. Don't use the AI, right? So some of what we see in the media is clearly people saying. You know what? I got chat G P, I'm gonna put chat G P T in everything, I'm gonna put it in this tutor, I'm gonna put it in this car and stick it in this refrigerator, because people. The media hype about this is incredible, right? And people are like, what is our role? Our role is to tell people, you guys stop. What I've tried to do is I've tried to adopt reporters. Tried to adopt reporters, I was talking to some reporters yesterday and the reporter said, you know, this AI thing's been around for six months and I was like, okay, you know. Stop, okay, I can help you. Worked across that part of the year, so you wanna make sure you solve the problem. The second thing I would, uh, that I'd like to make a point about is that. And talk about AIs as a technology. And I think this group, everything I've heard so far is that people are not talking about it as a technology, people are talking about it as a technology embedded within this larger socio-technical system. The little way that we have to analyze these things, the thing about to say is not as an isolated machine. But as a machine that is somehow connected to teachers, learners and people and perhaps refrigerators, right? That importance analysis and certain theory generations have been moved forward with this kind of work. That's quite the truth. The third thing, I guess I'd say is, you know what, again, it's not six months of AI. There are many people in this room who have been doing hard, a long, long time. So I, who would generate a thing, the lessons, remember and acknowledge all the great, but AI in education have been wrapped for decades. And just to think about the five most recent, I, there could be more, but this is the recent NSF National Science Foundation funded center. With leadership from North Carolina State, let's say the leaders, institutions, okay, NC State, Oregon Tech, Colorado, Buffalo, U I C, some of you, I see you in the rooms that are involved with those centers. But now, work, you are also people who can tell us, right? Along with people who are doing generative AI, and it's like, like Carolyn, the Carnegie Mellon, see how much it does. Right, and so, so many people who are a lot of things. The last thing I will say is, few, few researchers did a study in May. And they asked people, uh, US adults. Roughly eighteen percent of the people they polled said they had heard a lot about chat G P T. Thirty-nine percent said they'd heard a little about chat. Forty-two percent of US adults said they had heard nothing at all about chat G P T. That's important, because those forty-two percent. Are normal. If those normal, I mean, I think that's behind, I don't know what it looks like in another country. Those forty-two percent of people might get left behind, but we start thinking about those people who have heard of this, that. As a point of equity, we gotta think about those forty-two percent, and I'll sit there.
Peter, uh, because I think that there are lots of ways we could respond to all of these things. Uh, the next person, so this is actually not the list, because I see how with the theme, what was Lana.
All right, so I want to be all people quick, like Brian, I guess we come from a line of thinking, notebook, piece of paper. So the first thing I want to start off with are some of the challenges, I think the disparities around AI and around generative AI, some of them can be huge. Um, my students and I have been working with Boys and Girls Club in Little Village. And we mentioned artificial intelligence to uh middle school students. And they looked at us and said, what is that? We've never heard of that before. Um, so definitely a lot of concerns around equity and, and, and around who's gonna be getting access to different types of tools. Um, and then importantly, where we think about thinking, teaching. On the flip side of that, though, in thinking about uh work in my life and doing around disability. Also really excited about what some, what other type of possibilities that come about. Uh, when we enable people to essentially do things that they maybe could not have done before. Regularly encounter students, you know, we ask them, you know, here, we, we all like to do stuff around creativity. Even probably just three days ago, I was talking to some students and say, okay, like, we want you guys to come up with this idea. And what do they say? They say, I don't have any idea, I'm not creative. Um, and so one of the things I see and there's a tension here. Is using a tool like chat G P T to help them feel more agency in their creativity. To help them be able to start ideating, help them be able to start generating uh different types of, of ideas. And for me broadly speaking, that's one of the goals for me with computing and AI broadly. Is how we can use a tool to help grow people's agency. Help grow their ability to see their own superpower and to see their own ability to act and operate within a world. Um, really, I'm gonna mention, that maybe, maybe, maybe controversial. Is that I think we also wanna think about how people experience generative AI outside of the classroom. Uh, we spend a lot of time outside of classroom, outside of formal learning spaces. And I think there's a lot more that we can do to think about what those day-to-day interactions are like and not to think about what's happening with our inside, inside classroom spaces. Um, I'm also gonna very quickly concur, uh, concern that, that I think has been raised by um. One of my classmates at Stanford, Timmy Gerber, thinking about the energy resources that are being put into generating these large language models. And again, this is all something that is controversial, but I think it's something that we need to discuss, need to be aware of. Where those resources are coming from, who are the people who are oftentimes being brought into play? In order to try to validate these different types of models that are out there. Um, and via types of oppressions into sort of a cycle of oppression that that. Uh, continues to um to perpetuate. Um, the last thing I wanted to, to quickly note is. I'm just gonna come up in the last call, because I think there's gonna be, there's going to be some really neat ways that we can use generative AI on AI broadly to deepen our own understanding of students' learn. Um, perhaps it is in the ways that we go about studying learning environment, we have to go about the ways that we analyze that data. But I think there could be some new ways, and I think, you know, we can already sort of theorize or think through what that looks like. We're trying to synthesize across the series of transcripts that students have developed and hopefully we've trained it on some worthwhile data. And using something like generative AI, we can perhaps start to, start to be able to look at uh some of the themes. I mean, a lot of us do sort of thematic enough to feel and see some of those themes that uh that come about within that work. Um, so definitely, definitely more can say about that, but for me, those are things, I'm, some things I'm excited about, as well as some of the concerns that I have with generative AI.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, then, um, I wanted, I would not reveal because this is about education is about agency. Uh, education is about citizenship, that's what uh in, introduced by Ju Wu on the first inaugural note. And uh in our place in the faculty of education and working with the French Ministry of Education in uh, you know, France. Uh, this is something that is important because no one should be left behind. Because in uh, in a, in a society in which AI technologies are there. AI, uh, education is not just a domain of application of AI. Uh, education is much more important than that, and that means that all stakeholders in education. Need to understand a little bit about what is AI, what are the things that are uh possible with and uh especially teachers. Our preservive teachers, our interims teachers, the balance can also have. Uh, their point and can decide what are the aspects of AI they want to integrate uh in their practices. Then from this perspective, we are acting on different levels on the one side. There, this initiative about making uh seventy-five percent of the middle schoolers in the East Area. Be part of an initiative for how today introduction to AI to unplug activities, but also. Uh, algorithmic thinking, computational thinking, et cetera, and that has been supported uh very strongly about. By uh the, uh, the different politicians uh in our place, this is. First time that happens this way, and at the moment we have three thousand secondary students that have gone through this appropriation real. Under the results we are having from the sessions are amazing, because my people thinking related to AI. Tends to diminish after these sessions, just because a person understands that it is just data, most of the time fresh data. And this is the algorithm that are uh going through this data, okay? Uh, but we are also considering uh AI from the perspective of uh how we can do on the learning science. I'm just, uh, I, I, I'm, I plagiarizing, plagiarizing uh Sana. This morning, and what I think more than thing is, uh, also consider these tools are cognitive, but maybe meta-cognitive tools. Because this is the way in which depending on how we are using these tools. Uh, this can support also the reflection of the learners. And for our preservive teachers, we try to make things the simpler way. And say, okay, or with AI, you can be a passive consumer of AI content generated, uh, AI-generated content. Or you can be an interactive consumer and the literature review we make. Most of the applications currently are on this second level in which they are adaptive things. But the person is not trading these things, we are just interacting with the system that has all possible responses on. And this is behaving, adapting to the, to the, to the learner's expectation, something that is already. Uh, defined and cannot be expanded. And then we enter uh the creative activities with AI, and this is the part that we are having fun on. At the individual level, but also uh at the collective level. But also for transforming activities, and this is the part in which we have not seen a lot of work there. And this is the, the, the strategy we are having at the middle, we got at the end. With this uh middle age of students, middle schooler students. In which we want to take, uh, to engage them in real world problem solving. And then uh considering AI as a way uh to solve important problems, then for those who want to meet. We are entering even more complicated zone. Okay, um, uh, then uh learning science needs to meet computational neuroscience, artificial intelligence. Then how to do that? We need a grammar, then we are Go Five, who is Go Five here? Okay, Go Five is goal of artificial intelligence, intelligence is the old way, the symbolic one. When talking about chat G P T and these things, it is generative one, but we are the old one, it's still the old one, symbolic. Okay, symbolic is we need to model uh learning activities. We have to have models in the learning science. And with these good models, with this good quality for individual learning analytics, then we can. Uh, go information learning things, at first we need to have a corpus of data. And this is the, the, the way we are going to do the last five years. Creating a corpus of data that has been designed with our best intentions, with an ontology of uh. Creative problem solving activity and engaging uh colleagues from different epistemological and methodological perspective. And that's all for the moment, thanks.
To be interactive, and so I think that there are people who are monitoring the chat and we wanna know what. What questions and conditions may have been submitted but not represented here, uh, so let me.
If you, if you're the last person right now?
Yeah.
Why don't I are actually numbering the some of perfect some of of.
Okay, wow. I really want to like read this, how should you guys, this is in here. Um, okay, so I'm seeing here lots of possible applications and these are interesting things. To think about, uh, capabilities like analyzing student uh work. Um, and uh you see some things that were mentioned also uh like by Marcelo about how you can use it to kind of. Stimulate your own creativity or maybe just get you jump started. I'm sure people will be posted, maybe actually, if you have access to it, you can put it on move in the discussion and that would be great. Um. The role of learning scientists here, what should we do in community, I think that's a really good question, let's just look at some of these, I think you guys can probably do it from where you are, I hope. Um, so let's just give them one we should mention. I like the question about who might be harmed by tech. Um, developments, I think that um there are lots of sides and other sides to. Even the, the growth of huge companies in this space that have unintended quite important progress. Not automatically assuming the use of tech, I think one of the big questions that has come up in a lot of our panel discussions we've been running at CMU this summer is. Should we wait until this is a better, more tested technology or should we jump on the bandwagon? So that we don't get left behind, and I think that there are a lot of sides to that, uh, to be considered carefully. So there are some ideas here that seem to reflect how people are already using this technology and their. What is it for research? I like this capture thing, they can be invisible, can they? Well, they try to, I mean, so a lot of the work in this comes back from the Paul's um talk. Um, and, and even like earlier articles like the clicks to construct uh work to think about, you know, what's the data that we have, what's the thing? From that data, of course, you can always train a model to find patterns, but if the. Signal you need isn't there, they will often. Pick up on just various correlations that don't generalize and can be dangerous, especially if it goes undetected before you deploy it. So that's something to consider, and it's not fixed by recent developments. Formulate research questions, I'm sure how they don't think he's gonna do that more, anyway. Um, I, I encourage you all to take a look at these things, I think Trina is going to be posting those to move by, you all have your phone. Um, and I want to hear from the audience what questions people have, Janet.
So I wanna um repeat what Brian said, okay? I want to repeat what Brian said, but about slightly different point of view. I mean, who are we and what are we as learning scientists? Okay, we study how people learn. We use a variety of different um theoretical constructs and in fact, we specialize in. In uh, in, in looking at the way that those constructs interact with each other. We study what's needed to support students' learning. Okay, and we use all of those constructs to help us do that, okay? And we look to see what are the roles that technology might play. Okay, and I just, even after Brian talked before, I see all these things here that are kind of assuming that, oh yeah. You know, generative AI is gonna do all kinds of great things for us, okay? Generative AI may do some good things for us. But what we need to do as learning scientists is we need to be looking at what are the issues that we're dealing with and where. And where can the AI help us with that? And if we do anything else with AI, you know, if we do anything else with generative AI. We're just not being very good learning scientists, we are that way.
I I think that we should, I really agree with you, and I I could I could build on that. What I'd rather do as a facilitator is bring in some other voices from around the room and on the panel. Would anybody like to jump in? Does anyone have a different shade of, or do you just all agree and it's obvious? Or would anybody else around the room like to jump in and offer their perspective on this issue? Yes.
Many times here, AI helps clear the generating ideas. Then why do we think that the students don't have ideas about the phenomena around them in their own world? I think that's a wrong start with IE. I think we should start with students' own ideas, and then. They can test their own ideas with the existing ideas that IE is spitting out. And test them also those ideas, if they are false or not. I think if we are doing that, then we bring the students in world three or four, and don't stay in the world two of current education, which is just. Reproducing the existing ideas. I think we have to think more about how IE can. Support the students to advance their own ideas and even go beyond the existing idea to improve them. In order to contribute to problems we have in the world, and that they come out. In the way we are acting now, or maybe we can act in a different way.
So I like this as as a focused example of one thing where people are saying. Generative AI is going to do it for us. I actually think that Marcelo was not saying that he thought that we should start with GPT. And I think he was saying that the student should start the conversation.
Well, it's not that I'm saying that he is saying that, but many times that education is reacting at the moment in that sense. How it can help the students in the existing educational ways, and I think we we have to think how it can be different. How it can help the students also to change education.
If we would, if we would take Janet as a prompt here. She would suggest that we start with what we know from learning sciences that students need, and then find out if there's some contribution that AI can make to that.
A good one.
Does somebody, and this is a good example. So let me poll the room. I'm sure there are people here who do work in creativity research. What do we know prompts creativity in students? I know it's hot in here.
So such an interaction, collaboration with others, our perfect, and the environment that you can we like creativity. And I think one thing that we need to be also thinking in terms of generative AI is it also does make a lot of the period process away. My creativity is not just the product, but there's also a whole process involved. So thinking about which parts of this process should we be using.
Okay, zooming even in further, so collaboration process, other processes we engage students in. So what role do we need technology to play in supporting that creative process? So maybe engage students in that process, maybe with each other. What do we know are kinds of ways we need to be supporting those processes?
Well, scaffolding now, scaffold them at the appropriate level, at the appropriate time, with the right kind of prompt.
And what knowledge do you need in order to decide what is the appropriate scaffold?
Need a good student model.
Student model, where is the student model going to come from? Is it going to come from a digestion of all the documents on the web? Do we, do we, do we really actually doubt that we have knowledge about student modeling that we just are going to throw away and say. I think somebody else is going to give, I mean, so, yeah, I think that we have to ask ourselves, what is it that we can't already do? That we know that we want to have done as scaffolding for our students. And I'll just like throw in one little tidbit and say, my research group does research on AI. And we also do research on learning technologies, but the dirty little dark secret of my career is that we use very little of the AI. In the learning studies that we run, and the reason is because usually what we know that. Or what we're testing or thinking about that students need doesn't require it, and so. That's one reason why I'm very skeptical that there's going to be this huge impact, because we have to start with exactly what Janet said, and now she's gone. I invite you to do that, and then a very Lauren Rettig style of a kind of a talk, yes.
Okay, it's not exactly disagree, but I was going to say anyway, kind of ties into this. So what do you think we've done? I have, it's about mediocrity or lazy, and so I'm left worried that we need this or that it's going to take over and that it's going to be. Easier and that it the way for people to get out and do what we know is often the hard and important. So I'm just wondering, how do we, how do we avoid, I'm thinking of some of the stuff that Churchill was saying, you know, it starts off being good enough, and then it sort of becomes the only thing. So how do we avoid that?
Concern. Yes, so that is actually one of my own concerns. What do people think about that? And can we stop it, first of all? And so harkens back to the days of, early days of learning analytics. Snake oil salesman, I'll just say, saying that, you know, there were easy solutions. And it was going to do your work for you, and we knew it wasn't true, but they made a lot of money. So are there ways that, you know, are, is this a problem and what should we be doing about that? Yes.
So building on what you just said, I feel what you said is the way we're about creativity. We know that the process of understanding, of building understanding is really, really important for learning and for competition, right? So if you skip through the steps of the hard work. Sorry, I'm getting this or probably bothering me. You end up not getting to work on those critical thinking elements that we that we know is really important. And we know it's important when you're studying a project, and we also know it's important when you're trying to understand anything about AI, right? So like it kind of works on together. So I think when you're, to me, this is one of like the really critical questions. Is like, obviously, you know, if we're learning to write, for example, and writing is a difficult process. And we skip some of the steps and the outcome maybe looks. Whatever, it looks good enough, passing exam, whatever, like that's not the point of what I'm saying. But but you haven't, you haven't done that kind of internal work. That to me is one of the problems we need to be looking at more than some of the sort of type factor gears or sort of like reductions of the. You know, just like putting all of that aside.
Right, I think if there's this undercurrent of yes, we should be afraid, but not of what the media says we should be afraid of. Yes, Andy?
Actually, I could try to move on a different perspective. Right then, we assume that the learning process, a one student need to learn with this status. And we use AI to support that and when it went to spot. And I can look at a different perspective about social technology, because AI is a back in the system and human. And when AI is here to stay, then it's with this a bit. And we need to write a certain way we used to write before, or do we need to learn the same way we learned before, after this week, this question, I think. They go, we don't know that question, this is difficult to know when or where AI should be.
Right, there's this, students are going to use these tools that they can get access to. How do we teach them how to interact? And maybe this also kind of goes along with a little bit what Alyssa was saying. It's it's here, people are lazy. Can we teach them to not succumb to laziness, but use it in a productive way? Hand over here, yes.
One of the comments that's been made, I vigorously agree with, is. Along the lines of what takes place internally when kids learn to write, when they learn to synthesize. I'm especially concerned in the areas of coding and computational thinking, where there are massive gains worldwide. In bringing access to youngsters who don't have access to higher tech. And now with the capacity for asking GPT to write a code, we have this. Space where the job is done, the product is done, we've lost a sense that the real action is in the process. And in the meantime, we are now creating a space where the the people who have. Access to computational thinking at the very highest level are now the super elite, who are working on the models. And the millions of kids who were making progress along that path are now cut out because it's no longer needed. So this is a very serious thing. We aren't going to change that. We need to rethink what it is that we want kids to worry because. It's that that we don't want them to learn coding. There's something else going on. Same thing about writing. If they're not going to go through that process, if the process is already done for them, what is it that will fill that void? And that is not a question I've heard. Post is certainly not a question I've heard addressed.
So I think that lots of people do have ideas about that, maybe even on this panel are people who are working on it. I do know move out grounds and putting me. To actually, you know, work on that, but what do people want to say?
Just a short thing, I totally agree on that. It's super important that we understand. What we're back about, because this is like, there was a colleague saying this, I mean, this metaphor of AI being like an electric bike. It's something that can you bring you faster, you need to still know how to ride this bike. Okay, but it will make a difference, a super important difference. About the persons who have the theory of mind about what happens on the machine and how to prompt. The machine to have the best outcomes, and the ones who have not developed these meta cognitive approaches of their own knowledge. But that also about the the kind of knowledge that can be generated through these different artificial systems. And cannot benefit the same way, and we are already seeing that in our students, our master students, who are using that very differently. And some of them are even not aware, and it's just not laziness, it's about lack of domain of expertise. And this is lack also of the the understanding of what is an algorithm and what is the data that is feeding this algorithm. And this basic computer science knowledge that I think it's now required for being an active citizen. And who they not left behind, yeah.
Yeah, one, one, I want to, I do want to problematize a little bit this idea of like situating people as being lazy. I mean, to me, that's a, that's a problem. I don't think we want to be in that sort of practice. I think one is learning sciences, it's our job to design learning environments that motivate people to want to engage. And that if you also have people that are taking advantage of tools and using those tools to the best of their ability, that's not them being late. That is them leveraging the tools that they have access within their. The other thing, that's one more thing, right? This is Roy. I think the other part is that. Right now, a lot of how, at least as I'm hearing our conversations, we are situating the conversation as. Expecting for the future of learning and the future goals of learning to be the same thing that they are today. And I mean, I think about, you know, we're in Linsky's work around restructurations and wondering if there's, and even some of Roy's work around augmenting human intelligence. And I just, I wonder if we have limited ourselves in thinking about what are the possible futures of cognition that we might be experiencing? If we go about leveraging some of these tools in ways that go beyond our current thinking. That's not said I don't share a lot of these sort of same concerns, but I think there's also some future possibilities that we can start to think about. That don't live in our current understanding of human cognitive.
That's true, I mean, yes, I think we need much more axial argument dialogue. I'm personally glad that generative AI is forcing reflections and arguments. On community values concerning appropriate roles for computer augmentation in intellectual function. What are the appropriate roles, boundaries, and assumptions around that, tools of accessibility on everything?
Yeah, I love that framing, and let me actually just even type that, because eventually what we are going to be doing is thinking what should our research agenda be? And I think we should get that on there. So that was was.
Arguments by community values concerning the appropriate roles for computer.
Okay, great. On that, your students keyboard. Yeah, you want to add to that?
I mean, this is a webinar topic, and we're here to look at what the education that I'm trying to say about. How are they going to be using tools? And one of the really interesting things that came out of that was they surveyed, so that's even one student that I'm saying, if I can use AI to solve that problem, I know I can solve that problem. They don't, they don't necessarily care whether they understand if they want to do it. They know that they've been using AI as we to get through that answer. So the thing we now don't, about what's your set, we now think about a setting of different types. So it's not just about reading, it's about maybe to understand the theory and have to do that answer well.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I was having the same discussion with a group of people yesterday, and that was, you know, essentially what they were arguing as well. So I think we could expand on that a lot. Yes.
I think it's also important for us to think about, get involved in AI technology development. So I'm part of the AI institute, I work personally with the AI teams. And then you realize that within the AI research, there is some people really are really into their technology, what they can do. There's other people, people really interesting, what the needs in the real world, in the education field. So they really listen to the education experts. So I feel we are experts here, we need to reach out, yeah, to do that and educating.
We could add that to our agenda side.
Collaboration.
Yes, Kina, could you stand by the computer, actually, or maybe you're already added to the slide? So yeah, add something about we need these intensive partnerships between people with deep knowledge on both sides. I think that came out of Nicole's talk as well, but I will say I've been arguing that for a long time. Yes.
Okay, I want to follow up on your very good point. So some people want nuance, and they want so much nuance, right? So for example, I do work in AI, as you know, machine learning, knowledge engineering, NLP. And some people say, yeah, but but the teacher doesn't know about the context. I mean, yes, the teacher knows about the context because they're in the classroom. We're analyzing students' data in real time, giving the teacher actionable data. She can walk over and say, hey, you're not performing the way you normally do, is everything okay? I don't know your kid better than you, right? So it's what is the goal of the AI? Is the goal to support the teacher? Is the goal to scale, to get to more students? What is the goal? And and different philosophical and academic traditions have different goals, right? So in the learning sciences, we care about ontologies, we care about psychological validity. So I don't want to call something careless if it's not careless, right? Like, I'll just say, if if a note had gone home to my parents saying I was careless in school, I'd still be grounded, like I wouldn't be sitting here right now. So we have to be really careful about the psychological validity of these categories, too, these constructs that we talked about earlier. So when you come at it from computer science, you comment it differently than you come at it from education, from psychology, from linguistics, et cetera. And we have to recognize what those goals are and balance them for your end product.
Right, and that builds a lot on, I think, what Roy was saying about what are the appropriate roles, you know? And so we need to decide on one role at a time and build out what we expect from that role, and it's going to come from these valid. Concepts that we that we've been setting forever. Yes. You, you.
Janet's points here are set, like. As a field, we started on what I was about, with the need for have have impact. And we shouldn't be having this conversation if we're not helping people doing free perspective partnerships. Where does this? We don't need another round of tools that work in the lab and don't ever go anywhere. We need to be able to start at the beginning of saying, how do we make this work in the world outside?
Yeah, and I think that that connects up with a lot of these haves and have-nots questions as well, because we need to think about what are the resources. Across the landscape that create the context in which those partnerships happen. I see hand there, and then we'll come back up here. Yes.
To speed to that context, like, I want it, we like to.
To speed to that context, like, I want it, we like to break about it, I think. Punks on these sort of systemic issues that are foundational in the education system. And there's this huge opportunity with student data to to manage the way that schools, teachers, and students. Live the context of their education and AI can be used for those for management and interpreting that data. But what are those sort of unintended consequences, those systemic like dysfunctions that arise? From that use that might not be obvious. They're not learner facing, but they're still changing the structure of the contact where they are.
Yeah, I mean, I have a feeling that you're touching upon a big concern in areas of AI on bias. That sneaks into these models from biases in the data or just biases in the algorithms or even the representation of the data that feeds in. Um, there's a lot of work on trying to be able to do kind of. You know, like audits of the technology to identify these things. And I think that we know that we haven't solved that problem yet. Progress has been made. I I think that we shouldn't throw our hands up and say it's impossible, but I think we have to recognize that. There are questions there and that could be part of our agenda as well. And I think something that could make a really great. Uh, topic for partnership because a lot of that work is being done with a lot of assumptions of making it a purely technical way. Of approaching it that I think are not going to be as productive as if it was. Inside. You had your hand on.
Yeah, um, the the potential for co-creation really resonated with me. I think that's amazing. Uh, but it just makes me think about who is this innovation really for? Because even like right now, if you go to Detroit, Baltimore. LA, there's students who still use like books from the nineties.
Yeah.
Like, they don't even have internet at all. They have computers. Uh, not all of them, obviously, right? But it's like, God, let's like dive into this. New technology, but then where? Where there's still a lot of students who um. Don't even have access. Like, for example, chat GPT is like, you need internet for that, right? And then the pandemic showed us like the whole digital divide. So it's kind of like, it's just kind of like a Band-Aid to like forget about what just happened. So, yeah.
Yeah, I love that. And I want to make, take a quote from Bill Gates. Bill Gates himself gave a keynote talk at a conference about technology for development. And the first thing he said was, the problems in the world are big and they can't be solved with computers. And I think that that what, you know.
Here's Bill Gates also saying, okay. I thought this had prizes. If Bill Gates said. First, he starts off by talking, in my lifetime, I've seen two demonstrations of technology that's probably is revolutionary. The first one he talks about is graphical user interface. As particularly in particular built by the demo he saw by Charles Simone, who was his guy, the Windows guy. He didn't mention iPhones. That's the second big surprise game last year. I've been meeting with OpenAI. I was so excited about the work I gave him a challenge. His challenge, training an artist's intelligence to pass advanced placement biology. Make it capable of answering questions if it hasn't been specifically trained. If you can do that, I said, then you have made a true breakthrough. Pass the AP Biology test. Now, maybe that's.
Do people agree with that, though? Is that true? No.
Bill Gates said it. He said, once it aced the test, because of course they, that they're not graded on. The AP test, but once it passed the test, we asked it a non-scientific question. What do you say to a father with a sick child? Bill Gates said, if a thoughtful answer is probably better than most of us in the room would have given. The whole experience was stunning. That's Bill Gates. If you sit in a room, people, people, and you say, robot made an answer to a question of what do you say to a father with a sick child? And you actually write down. Uh, it was that robot was really much better than the humans. Bill Gates, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm disappointed in Bill Gates, but like that's a question that I prefer that is somewhere in the internet. So I was worried.
Remember who's building this. They need, they need, these are American companies doing.
Not all Americans.
I wasn't planning on, I think, Bill Gates, because it seems a thing I do want to add a different point also is that. He does have a nice quote that's saying AI is not going to be able to, nor should it replace teachers. It is going to be a powerful tool, potentially, but it is not a replacement. So, you know, there's some things that could be redeeming on Bill's part. What I wanted to say, though, is that, and this has come up in several conversations, is that, you know. Even when we talk about gender of AI, the default is to think chat GPT. And to assume that text paradigm. And I think just to ask, like, what is the ISLS research agenda? Is to think about whole new interface paradigms that are supportive of a range of learning and learner situations. Uh, you know, like Nicole was talking a lot about some of the work, which trend and others do with all the different ranges of sensors in there. And it's like, look, you can't talk verbally to, uh, you know, chat GPT currently. Um, there's a lot more that we could potentially do and just open up that horizon. I feel part of our job is to sort of. Demonstrate ethically and responsibly, what are some radical new possibilities that, you know, we can lead up to in in the next decade?
So there's already.
Multi-model, multi-model, just so you know.
Victor, you were too far from me. Can you run?
Yeah, and I mean, there's things like the image generation and music generation, but it's like everyone's like in chat GPT and how is this going to work? And it's like, there's a default paradigm. It's like, I type, I press enter, it gives me back something. It's like that one very narrow interaction structure.
True. I just. On Bill Gates slightly. I would point to Tom Mitchell's opening keynote from our. Um, series at CMU because he started out with an example. It was very much like the Bill Gates example where he was. He asked Chad GPT to give him um, a kind of a morph for a a math problem. And and to explain how he would, how it would offer a hint to a student. And it was very good. And he's like, see? Um, you can use, uh, you know, these GPT models to generate. Pedagogy, but later in the conversation, he he did bring out that, oh, and then later I asked it to teach me linear algebra and it was terrible. So. I think that there's kind of like a grain size where there are kinds of questions that you can get into some answer to and others that you can't get into some answer. Apparently, a sick child is something that there's a lot of data. Yeah.
I see a future for lesser language model, more specialized. Uh, being trained for more, a more truthful material. And the more moving which you could program learning science. Rules. Make it. Conversational agents more scaffolding for learning, but I see a future for that.
True. And there's a whole area of machine learning called neuro-symbolic reasoning, where people are bringing together. Symbolic forms of AI and real forms of AI and trying to integrate them and using the um symbolic. Reasoning aspect of it as scaffolding. It's hard to get it to work well. It hasn't worked as well as you would think. Uh, but I do think that there's a lot of work going in that area that can start to work on some of these problems. It could be also a an avenue for collaboration between fields. Yes.
Now that I see the research agenda slide here, I wanted to point out, I love how somebody mentioned the recent partnerships with practitioners. But even though I've heard a lot about student agencies, students are not there, learners and owners. So I believe the the research agenda needs to include. What students are doing and thinking and using AI for, and I mean, not just college students, I mean, elementary grade and high school students. And what teachers are doing with it, because often reality, and that's what happens in the classroom reality, goes way faster than research. So when I SLS come up with a special issue about AI in maybe you're very fast next year. Next year is way too far away from what's happening in my class next year.
Yeah, I think that's true. And I do think that comes back to this idea of studying how people are learning with the technology. And trying to find the appropriate role script, um, starting with what are the kinds of things that people are doing, some of which. Are positive and some of which are are less positive. Yes. At you. Yes.
So in the point being, do you need this notion that AI is backward or related to teachers are here for the long haul? How teachers understand AI is key. I've been working with a middle school technology teacher. And they are the ones mediating how students are interacting and experiencing AI. And ethical conundrums come up all the time. The generative AI right now is still reproducing bias, and I think it always will. And then when it's, they come across something really biased, the teacher has to understand why is that AI making that bias or whatever it may be. Um, and it's a piece where I don't think the vast majority of teachers don't have an AI literacy. And so for thinking about bringing AI in schools, what is necessary baseline understanding of the teachers being informed? It's mediating AI.
Right. I mean, there was already, um, as part of the AI for K twelve movement in the US, already a lot of work with teachers and trying to boost AI. Uh, literacy among teachers. And I think that that highlights another sense in which. The concerns that we should have are not all technical. Because it's hard for teachers to find the time and energy to do that learning. And so it's easy to brush it aside. Uh, so how do we solve that problem? I think that's a huge problem. They're already tired and overworked. And when are they going to have time for that? Yes.
So, and to go along with that, so we're not going to replace teachers? Absolutely. When are we, when are not us, but when are people going to say? We have all these AIs, but of teachers, let's increase the class size. Because that is a fear I have. That will, that people will perceive that AI is helping, making things easier. In reality, teachers are probably having to do a lot more scrambling to figure out how to deal with the mess that's been dealt to to them with AI. And we're going to end up hurting. And we've already got a very gradual teacher population. Because of the last three years and then all of the other things that be here in the keynote, opening keynote. And so I think there's just a lot right now that we really do need to think about and remember that it is part of the. Social system of our lives. And that is, I mean, we started with one of that point.
Yeah, I mean, so there were all, you know, so going back even further than the past three years, um, there was. It was like a decade of like, let's scale up education with AI already. And that didn't really work. So let's, let's be the, uh, you know, reminders of of the history that we've already had. Um, I, we're coming to towards the end and I know Kriina was very concerned that we might not get to the part where we're setting an agenda. I think we have some ideas here and I would just like to kind of guide our thinking. Um, there's, you could go on forever, uh, but let's, let's focus a little bit. I saw some hands over here. Are there ideas about what should be our agenda?
Uh, yes. Yes, you go ahead. Um, I think, uh, most of us in the room who are creating technology in a space that we're either creating technology for teachers or for students. But when we're doing this, we should be conscious about both parts. Um, I have been in situations where I'm. Creating a paper, spending my very human time, uh, to write a paper that's clearly not written by a human. Um, and I've received emails that was clearly generated by AIs and I can use AIs to respond to that email. So I can see this Russian investing doll of AIs. Uh, and when we're doing things, we should be cautious about both parties.
Right. So I think it's like, where does AI sit in bridging the relationship between students and teachers? Uh, Kriina, where's Kriina? I'm here. Yeah.
So, um, one of the things that I have found really interesting in talking with students across the age span is the ways in which they are collaborating on AI. Um, when I talk with young children, those who are worried about writing, they think chat GPT is a terrible writer. They think it's boring. They don't like to use it to write their papers because they don't think it gives it voice. But they use it to talk back and forth to it like it's a partner. A lot of these kids are still lonely. Because COVID impacted their ability to create tight friendships. And they're using chat GPT as a sounding board as someone to talk to about their assignments. And that's not something that we're really looking at. Um, the other thing that's interesting is that in knowing that children are doing this with the AI, we can use that as an opportunity to develop their ability to collaborate. By getting them to practice collaborative strategies with the AI, like elaborating, making something they wrote. Have more voice or be less boring. And so there's an aspect of strategic creativity. And also social emotional interaction and collaboration, which we're not really looking at, which I think could be very interesting for the type of research.
I would love you to write a squib on that topic, but what I want you to make clear is what even means for a human to collaborate with an AI agent? Because I have a huge technique that people say, oh, they're collaborating. But it's like, okay, well, what does that mean? Well, they're talking to each other. Well, then how is that different from like, you know, a tutorial dialogue? Well, because it looks cute. So I want to swim and I want you to make that clear. Yes, thank you. We're looking for your squid. Uh, there are hands here and over here. Let, uh, but Kriina, you are our fearless leader.
I'm wondering actually if we could give the.
Towards the end, I think what we should do is have closing words. I think Kriina will write them down if they. Or it's not me, I'm gonna shut up now. Let's start with Marcelo.
Oh, I can go first.
Closing words.
Um. Yeah, I guess to me, if you're a lot of different kind of possibilities related to generative eyes and thinking about supporting our research, supporting. Our teaching practice, or rather, how we go about supporting teachers. Um, as well as think about ways that we support support students. I do think one of the areas this gets back to protected partnerships, I think. School districts, the the school administrator are probably going to look to us as learning scientists. Hopefully, they start to look to us. To think about what kind of policies and practices they want to try to set up. Within their, within their faith. So alongside us thinking about what some possible futures are. I think we also do want to kind of be cognizant and I think maybe be in community with one another to think about what are the kinds of. Um, research facts or theoretically motivated strategies or policies that we're recommending to schools. Um, we're going to think that's, that is where they are right now. And so I just put that out there. It's something to think about in addition to all the forward-looking work that I think we all want to do.
And next, Margarita.
Yeah, just a suggestion for the community, there's this, uh. Long-term, uh, work that has been already done on, um, using computers as cognitive and metacognitive tools. Uh, Donna Sen, Azabetho, and all the, a lot of colleagues sitting around here. Then I'm thinking also that is something we need to consider also. How, uh, understanding, uh, how learners, understanding their own cognitive and metacognitive processes. And understanding the basics, fundamentals of computer science education can help them. Uh, to interact with this system. With a certain theory of mine of what is, what are these systems capable of? And reducing their magical thinking that, uh, when persons have no knowledge about what is this stupid. Uh, data, please, plus allergy, uh, systems is providing to them. Then I I think we need to. Stress this part about the increasing the 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 capacity to understand these systems and then mystify them. And to consider how we can use them as something that can augment our capacity.
Sanada.
So i- if we look at the role of technology historically, not just in the learning sciences, but also in how technology has played a role in. Human beings developing knowledge. But sometimes it's the science which has pushed the development of the technology. Sometimes the science uses the technology and sometimes. It's a technology that has actually driven the science. No, it's, and if you look, I mean, I have some examples from physics, that's my background, where a lot of cosmological, um, new knowledge was produced because the electronics. Was developed. So perhaps that is. One place we are at with this technology that's become easy to use. And in terms of a research agenda, we we seem to be moving from. Computer-supported collaborative learning to computers as the collaborative learner. Replacement and I agree with you that they have these students for like, you know, fifty years. So it it's just a place now that that has become very common, if not even good. So what does it mean for our theories? What does it mean for our designs? What does it mean? What does learning mean? What does collaboration really mean? So I think we have questions, not just in terms of. Uh, not just in terms of, you know, the the practicalities, but also these philosophical points.
And Brian.
I love my Roomba. Marcelo, you mentioned, and now when you mentioned. Research practice partnerships and and just the notion of partnering with Christine, who said, said, right? This notion of being able to partner with the people who are doing. The more technical aspects of that. And I think the practice, maybe the buttons here are industry. Because they're, they're driving, right? They're, I mean, particularly, certainly. Because they're they're driving, right? They're, I mean, particularly, certainly, there's no way any of us are gonna make a large language. If, you know, of the size of chat GPT five point nine or Alpha, right? So those are the guys, the industry is gonna drive all a lot of this stuff. And I I wish that Janice and Neil Hefner and other people could make just like scale up, you know, there'd be like lots of those, right? Because we would know that they were driven by this, but the fact that they aren't, I think, is that that we have to build some of those partnerships. I think they have an impact, particularly at a point in time where I said, people, I I need to see it where people are going. That's the new shiny thing. We gotta embed it and stuff. And 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 it may continue to just build old models, old practices versus, I think, what we can deliver in terms of all the great knowledge.
Okay, I just wanna say one thing, I'm breaking my own, like, whatever, but, um, there is a huge question in the computer science community about whether universities really should just defer to these big companies. Or whether we should really push on these open source large language models. And there are ways that I think universities are talking about building consortia so that we can host bigger models to compete. So that we don't have to defer to them, because there are reasons why it could be bad to just.
Yeah.
So I just wanna highlight that that is an ongoing conversation, and there isn't an answer. People on both sides, but I just don't want it to screw that. Okay. Like thirty-two billion in our cost at CMU, so.
So, yeah, generating, transforming what we learn and how we learn, I think, just like, let's try to wrap up a little bit. Uh, we just, I think, as a learning scientist, that we we do not just always react, but to such extent, we need, we need to leave things. And it will call for collaboration, even learning scientists and computer scientists and the data scientists together. And also wins a lot of input and ownership from school, condition, and the learners, even what they are, that make things happen.
Thank you. Okay.